Okay, who's gonna call roll call today? Gibson?
Here.
Kapler?
Here.
LeCarni?
Here.
Ornsby?
Here.
Satterfield? Dolenberg?
Here.
Winland?
Here.
Great, all right, can approval of the minutes of the January 17th meeting?
Second.
Why can't you have to?
Yeah.
I moved to approve.
Move to approve.
Okay, okay, we got a movement in second, we're good to go. All right, so this is the plan and zoning meeting of February 21st, 2024. We are recommending body. As if anyone in the audience wishes to speak, when you do, we would appreciate it if you'd go to the back podium and give us your address, your name and address for the record. We have, looks like we've got two members that are on YouTube, I guess?
Teams.
It is teams, all right, teams.
Teams.
So that'll make it a little cumbersome, but it'll work. And with that, we'll go to first, looks like the first case, 23069.
Mr. Chairman, this is related to the case very next up, 23049. This is Glenbrook Ridge, fourth addition. This is a replat, and you'd originally seen it before, but now there's a different configuration based on a new floodway projection. It's being presented by Nelson Development One LLC, otherwise known as Nelson Construction and Development, and the request is to take a replat of Outlet A and Outlet One from Glenbrook Ridge, second addition, and Lot Two and Outlet F of Glenbrook Ridge, third addition, and combine them essentially into one plat. The area surrounding here is pretty much all urban medium intensity with urban low intensity to southwest and urban low intensity land use to the west, there is some greenway land use, and then there is semi-public here where the tower is, and then some urban high intensity land use as well. The urban medium intensity land use for this area facilitates the zoning to urban medium intensity. You still have A1 to the southwest for zoning, but the majority of the area is surrounded by urban medium intensity, and then across the street, A1 and C2, and then to further to the west, R3. In this district, the proposal that will be coming up at the site development plan level calls for multifamily housing, or else, otherwise known as multiple family structures, is the term that is used under the UHI definition for zoning. Lot configuration for the proposed plat is such that Lot One now will be made up of a part of that Outlet A and Lot One from the prior second edition, and then also Lot One or Lot Two and Outlet F of the third edition. But what we have is 4.62 acres as the result of that, and that's essentially this area right here. They're also adjoining outlots, detention outlot one here, which is 1.35 acres, and then detention outlot that is right here too, which is 1.47. This area right here below is still all floodway, that is 6.14 acres designated as Outlet A as a part of Glenbrook Ridge, fourth addition. Third addition, this area here was what was platted that is part of this plat tonight, Outlet F and Lot Two. The second addition was this area, there's detention basin one, and then this entirety of Outlet A that now makes up the fourth addition. The reason that we've seen a difference here between the original approved plat that went through city council on November 7th, and this is the new one, is that the new flood insurance rate map has diminished greatly, the area that is floodway, so that the area that might be filled now is far greater than what was originally shown you back last fall. And that's why the proceeding is different going through this new plat. That plat did not get recorded, the prior one that was approved by city council, so in essence, it's not really a replat of that plat. This will give you an idea here that most of the utilities are coming through this area connecting to the structure. You do have a major gas main here coming through 75 feet in width with a pipeline that is also running through, and that's going to necessitate further permissions from the pipeline company at some point. For connectivity, thoroughfare, and access, you've got access North Ridge Circle, and then you have, I should say Glenbrook Circle North, and then it branches off to Glenbrook Circle South. This is, remember, an easement area, this is a private drive here. This is a public street here. And then there is also a south accessway drive that currently connects from Devil's Glen over to the existing quartet. There will be obligations on all property owners within this area to maintain and keep these as open ways. The city will not take on any of those responsibilities. There's also anticipated a trail that will be placed in the area below here, below where the structure is actually anticipated. And then you do have sidewalks that do come up along the building from the south and on the east side, and you have the general sidewalk connecting out from Glenbrook Circle South to the major, to the arterial street Devil's Glen. Stormwater again will be maintained in these two outlots, these are regional basins. And this is the firm that the comparison was referring to before. The floodway is down here now. And this is what will be on September, or either April 11th of this year. It will become active once it has totally proceeded through city council. I believe last night was one of the, might have been the final reading for that particular item. Staff in recommending approval of the final plat would also attach these conditions to any approval. I would ask, are there any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Hey, well, on the recommendation, Greg, owners slash developers to provide caretaking agreement for outlets during recording the plat. What are those? And if we, do we know what the caretaking agreement is usually? And then how do you hold them to that standard if we don't know what that is? Or do we know what that is?
We don't have anything yet, but we've had the provisions in the past that we do have caretaking agreements for the regional detention, that there needs to be something for all the parties to sort of share that burden. And I believe our city engineer can elaborate typically what we have for policy on that.
Ultimately, Lynn, it would just be that they have to make sure that they're meeting city code and meeting our stormwater ordinance. We would not go into specifics, we would leave that between the property owners. If there was something for a public infrastructure that we were requiring caretaking, that'd be different, but ultimately, we leave it between the private parties.
So it can grow up, it can do whatever it wants, we don't?
Say that again?
It can grow, it can fill in, it could not, we don't specify those.
No, well, that is built into city code, so if there is violations, then yes, we would apply that. But in terms of who is doing what, we leave that between them.
Thank you.
Oh, curious, Greg, why didn't the original plat get recorded?
We went through the process, we discovered that the firm, and we brought this to the attention of the developer, that this is going to become active. The original plat would show the older outlot area, which is far more extensive. So in order for the structure to have potential to be placed with the number of units that it has, this is the preferred design, that this be replicated here, and that this be the new outline, so that it doesn't come strictly down here. This is where the old boundary was, the new boundary is down here, so there's more land mass that can be used to support the density level that is anticipated for the structure.
That's one thing I really appreciate about you guys on this team here with the city. You're always looking out for the developers and helping people be aware of what's coming. Appreciate that about you guys, thanks, Greg.
Okay, Ann or Roy, either one of you have any questions or comments?
Not for Roy, I have one comment either on this one or the site plan, just confirmation that nothing will be done until the easement or the beneficial interest in the easement approves any utilization of it.
Scott, I did have one question.
Go ahead.
And Greg, you mentioned the trail. Is that trail for the benefit of that property only, or is it connecting to an existing trail?
It does not connect any trail that is publicly held. It is, I believe, for the benefit of the people who live there. It's designed for their sake, it connects to that area to the north. We had anticipated at one time that there might be a trail connection, and that was the Parks Department that was thinking about doing something along those lines, but that's been since dismissed due to the rugged nature of trying to connect a trail through this area.
Okay, thank you.
Roy, just back to your question or comments on this particular case. When we do have a motion, as long as we're going with the staff recommendations, I think that takes care of it, the easement part. And then the next case, when we get to that one, I believe it says right in there that that will not move forward until the floodplain stuff is taken care of. Anyone in the audience wish to address us on this?
I have one more question.
Yep, go ahead, Lynn.
It makes reference to the trash pickup will be handled through a private service, what about snow removal?
Snow removal.
Sorry, I just.
Snow removal.
Trash pickup handled through a private service.
Yeah.
This is all private.
Private.
Snow removal, the same?
Except for the right of way, which is established in the northern part of the subdivision.
Gotcha.
Unless it's right of way, it doesn't get snow removed from us. So the private drive does not get snow removed.
Once you come into the subdivision, everything to the east and the north is public. Glenbrook Circle South to the west is private, so they're responsible for handling that.
Yeah, and that'll be part of the HOA and.
And that already is, actually, so that's already built, obviously, so they have been doing that for three years.
So any new units would be subject to the same thing, yeah, thank you.
Do you want to discuss this case as well, Mr. Chairman, and then vote on them together, or?
I think we should do them separately.
All right, Chris has spoken. With that, if there are no other questions, looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number 23-069, subject to my staff recommendations.
I'll second that.
Okay, Lynn beat you to it, all right.
It's three.
Okay.
Any discussion on the motions? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Okay, there's none, so motion carries.
This case, Mr. Chairman, is related in that it is about the site plan. I've already gone through these slides regarding a number of the issues. Essentially, what you're looking at for the site plan is a 111-unit multifamily structure that is here outlined in the tan. It meets our standards based on the area that could be filled excluding Outlet A. There is 2,912 square feet per each unit. The requirement is for there to be 2,500 square feet per each unit of land area in this design. The density is 14.96 units that is proposed, the upward limit is 17. So the petitioner has met both of those standards in regard to the movement in the floodway. This will give you an idea of what the structure will look like, it's going to be somewhat similar to the existing structure, and the size requirements have been met. We would put that there is also a condition in here regarding the basement area for garage that there is anticipated, a set of pumps for pumping any water out of the basement area if it were to flood, and that would have to have an overview from any of our people, either in engineering or in the building department. Utilities, again, are all stuffed in primarily from the north into the structure. And we do have this 75-foot easement, again, which the building is not in any part of this, but shall require, because of some encroachment of parking in that drive area, written permission from the utility, and that is an agreement that will have to be presented prior to the issuing of building permits. And again, we talked about the thoroughfare access, again, off of Devil's Glen Road, primarily through the south access drives that exist, and then through Glenbrook Circle North down to Glenbrook Circle South. Pedestrian trail, the same thing, again, there is nothing that is actually different of what we had discussed. Parking, 215 spaces are provided, 209 are required, 888 spaces shall be provided, 106 of these parking spaces shall be in the basement area that I previously discussed, 109 parking spaces shall be located outside the structure. Stormwater detention, again, as you can see, these designs in here for these areas that are enclosed for Outlets One and Two, and then there will be water quality elements that will also have to be verified prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy for these. The trees are being planted, and there are more than enough trees that have been provided by the developer. They'll be planted in non-easement areas. Our concern is that they just get planted, we don't want to see them intruding in any easement areas. Lighting shall be downcast on the site. And again, this is the firm showing the 100-year, or I should say the floodway and the 100-year floodplain, and the changes in the receding of both. Staff would make a recommendation for approval of the site development plan with the conditions listed. I would ask, are there any questions?
Any questions? All right, hearing none, anyone in the audience wish to address us on this? Everyone's quiet tonight.
It's all written out pretty well in the staff recommendations.
Yeah.
Great. All right, then. You wouldn't want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case 23-069, subject to all the staff recommendations.
Second.
Is that 49, are we?
49.
Yep, 23049, subject to all the staff recommendations.
Second.
And we got a second? All right, one more chance, any, any further discussion on this? Nope, all right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Onward.
Our next case regards the final plat for Unity Point Crossing at first edition. Applicant is Kevin Kellner, Focus Development. This is already coming before city council, the first reading and a public hearing were held last night. First step has been approved, and there will be two more readings. Current land use is community commercial, and we have parks and rec over here in the Davenport side, urban light intensity to the east of 74, and then we have public semi-public further to the north. Zoning, again, somewhat reflects with the open space to the west in Davenport. Community commercial zoning throughout the area surrounding this proposed development. And then we have our one single family on the east side of I-74. This site is, of course, transitioning to a C3 zoning class that this body had already reviewed earlier, and as I mentioned, it's already gone through the first reading and public hearing. This is the sewer map showing sort of the retracement of this lot. It has never been platted. And this is the plating here, there's a dedication area here to make sure the right of way is actually being assigned to Kimberly Road, and we have a breakout of five lots that are somewhat following the configuration of the parking area. We've also got necessary easements that have been added, and also we have accesses to each one of these lot areas to make sure that each lot has proper access. As you can see in this overlay, there is a following of what is a pattern throughout this parking lot, and then also acknowledgement of the hobby lobby building. And we wanted to make sure each one of these areas conforms to the setbacks that are shown. The thoroughfare access essentially is Kimberly Road, and there are two main access points. These are going to remain as they are, as shown on the plat on the flag portion, as you can see here and here. Utilities are being provided for finally acknowledgement of easements being placed on site is what is key here. And we have pedestrian trail access primarily is this sidewalk here. Most of the traffic coming into this area is going to be all vehicular, so we don't anticipate anything major in that regard. Staff reviewing the proposal recommends approval as it does meet goal C, to attract and retain businesses and industry in the goals and plan organization segment of the comprehensive plan. I would ask you any questions?
Any questions?
Just one, Greg, it's Roy, does any of this site, or is any of this site impacted in any kind of flood zone? And is that changing with the new map that's being adapted, adopted a lot?
Yeah, with the other map, there was no encroachment, and with the new map, there is no encroachment.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone in the audience which, wish to address us on this? No. All right. If there's no questions, anyone have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case 24008, subject to staff recommendations.
One second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Our next case, Mr. Chairman, it's 240111, it's 6021 Valley Drive. It's one of the lots that faces out toward Valley Drive right here. It's Lot Eight of Fields Development, first edition. Greg Franch of Symmetry Mortgage is the applicant. And it's for contractor condos is essentially what the application concerns. Future land use designation is industrial, and that supports the overall land use, or I should say the zoning that has occurred here. There's been a delimeter, if you will, or a boundary where Valley Drive north and east, or north and west, I should say, has been typically residential, and then everything back here in the early 1970s got rezoned primarily to an I2 zoning classification, and that's what it is right now. So you have residential with the north and industrial primarily to the south. This is the lot of record right here that is involved. It's approximately one acre. The amount of lot coverage, given that the building is 10,300 square feet, is only 24%, so it meets that requirement, the structure itself also meets the requirement in terms of height. Question comes up whether or not the 30-foot or 25-foot setback should be observed from this area. It would be brought up to the board of adjustment to see if the buffer yard would need to be at that distance of 30 feet. It is rather a constrained parcel, and there is an area where water is attempting to be allowed to be conveyed on the backside of this lot. It will be a six-unit structure of 10,300 square feet that the proposal is being brought to us as tonight. Just to give you an idea of how this will look. Utilities are going to primarily, again, come from Valley Drive, almost everything. And the south connection, there is a sanitary sewer connection available. Thoroughfare access shows this area being cut off here, the part of the subdivision of Fields. These two lots here were meant to have direct access only to Valley Drive when this is platted. There will be no trailer sidewalk connection, as this is pretty much a vehicular use site. And there are definitely a good amount of parking spaces for what is required. 17 spaces provided and then additional within each of these structures. Typically, you would see one half space for each employee, and then one for each vehicle used in the conduct of the business. And the stormwater detention, stormwater will be allowed to be conveyed off the back of the lot. And this is looking at the lot back up toward Valley Drive, there is a drop-off. This area is primarily flat and filled, and then there's immediate somewhat of a drop as you get back toward this area, which is where the water tends to drain, and would drain more normally toward the east. Landscaping and lighting, eight tree factors will be planted along Valley Drive right of way. There will be two required in the vehicular use area, and all lighting shall be downcast. This lot has already been removed, and is acknowledged on the new firm that it is no longer within the 100-year floodplain. Staff in reviewing the proposal would recommend approval. There are two conditions, one being that the site plan go before the board of adjustment for evaluation as to the hardship, whether or not there should be that hardship reduction, and then the other one is that the, we go again with the water quality mechanisms in dealing with those being certified by the city engineer. Other than that, staff recommends approval.
Mr. Chairman, can I just clarify the staff report? Because I think as you read through that, you kind of saw there was the 30-foot front yard buffer, which would be the normal thing that you would review and make a recommendation on today. Like any other site plan, if there are constraints on the lot, and the petitioner wants to go to the board of adjustment to have some of those constraints removed, such as a five-foot less setback, as is the case here, the petitioner's indicated that may be something they choose to do, that would be a board of adjustment decision, just so you're aware.
Thank you. Okay, any questions?
But they've normally done that first, we don't usually have two choices in front of us.
No, I think, I think it was really just a kind of transparency.
Okay.
30-foot is what is under code. It's for an industrial lot, it's small. Industrial lots have the most bulk standards, the most restrictive bulk standards put on them. So when you do that to a small lot, it causes some, some constraints, obviously. And so I think the petitioner has contemplated, that's certainly their decision, but contemplated that and shown that in their drawings provided that they, you know, they're going to have a 30-foot option, but if they do receive board of adjustment approval bill, they may, they may choose to seek that, I should say.
So this process is not out of the ordinary necessarily, of order?
No, no, it's just you know about it.
Understood. Brent, can you?
Greg, it's, go ahead.
Brent, could you clarify what water quality mechanisms are required for the back of that property and why?
So that's just our typical stormwater detention. So this lot was part of a previous subdivision, so stormwater detention itself is actually provided off-site within the rest of the subdivision regionally. But the subdivision was built before we added water quality to our stormwater ordinance, so they are required to provide just the water quality component. So they have a bio-swell that's located at the west property line that will then discharge that water down around the building and ultimately to the detention.
Gotcha, thank you.
Roy?
Yeah, one question about the parking. So I'm sensing just a little chicken egg, clarify for me. So we got a six-unit contractor condominium, but if our code formula is based on half an employee per unit and such, how do we know what the math is going to be till we know who's actually occupying it?
We run into this problem, we've had this problem with other projects of the similar nature in this area, and that is pretty much the burden that will have to be carried by the people who are renting on site. We cannot anticipate the number of vehicles or employees in every one of these instances. So it almost comes down to a standard of what the renter and the person renting the property to them will be able to withstand. We have not run into any problems with these type condos of over-parking. There are other issues, though, further on down with other types of businesses where there has been a parking issue, but to try to gauge that number of parking spaces based on trying to figure out how many vehicles there may be or employees. based on trying to figure out how many vehicles there may be or employees, that is something that we are not going to hit an exact figure. We're not going to always be able to do that.
Yeah, the code just makes some assumptions here. Our parking code is what it is, but it does make some assumptions that these contractor condos aren't really that. They're usually one man or one woman shops with one or two vehicles. They come in in the morning, run out, do their calls, do their service calls, whatever they're going to do, using a fleet vehicle to do that and have a personal vehicle parked, and then reverse that in the evening. It's just, that's assumed in code. So that's how it's calculated.
Okay, thank you.
Where does it say that these are rentals? They're not individual, they're not going to be sold?
Well, it actually says condominium.
Condominium.
It does?
Yeah. Yeah, they could be all of the above. The ownership regime is not under our review.
No, but would that change our parking requirement if it ends up being a condo versus a rental?
No.
Okay.
Anyone in the audience wish to address us on this? If you could go to the podium, thank you.
My name is Joseph Boll, B-O-L-L. I'm the small lot adjacent to it. The house there where it says 30-foot setback design. Just a couple of small concerns, I guess. Is it established how far the set-off is from our property line to the back of the building? I believe I was told 25 feet. I just wanted to make sure that was correct.
Mr. Chairman, we'd have Greg answer that. Greg, can you?
Yeah.
I magnify this here and see if we can. It's 13. It's a total, I believe, at 25. Well, no, we have 13 and we have 12.8 right here.
A little over 25.
A little over 25.
There's 12 between the building and your property line.
Yep. And then that would be kind of finished off, like lawn back there, grass, correct? Maybe like shrubbery of some sort, or how's that transition into our yard?
They're not required to place any landscaping in terms of shrubbery because you're both I-2. That's up to the discretion of the developer if he would like to do that. Are they graded that in such a manner that the slope, I'm not certain as to, you know, what grade that may be to facilitate that. But that is up to his discretion because you're both I-2 general industrial district.
And another concern was the shrubbery and some of the stuff at the road. It's like a racetrack down there and pulling out in the driveway. We have kids that are going to be driving soon, and all the neighbors across the road have kids who are driving soon. So just a little bit of a concern of that with traffic and then the shrubbery, you know, that it ain't too obnoxious and blinding for say, was just a small concern.
I can answer the question about the site distance there. So we do have requirements to maintain site distance triangles at all the corners of the entrances so that no permanent obstruction, so whether it be a sign or landscaping would cause a sideline issue.
Right, yeah.
So those may be graphically shown there, but once they actually get to planting, our group will, our building department will make sure that the sight lines at the driveways are clear. So they may have to be adjusted slightly.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to look up that required side yard setback, but it's industrial to industrial is the issue here. Even though it's occupied by a home right now, the use there is illegal non-conforming use where the home resides. I'll give you in just a minute here the, Taylor's got it.
Okay. Yeah, it's a sum of 25 feet. So if you have 10 and 15 or 12 and a half.
You got 25 and 1.
The total side yard.
So he has to, total 25 on all the side yards. He's divided it by two.
And then Greg, you were saying that the slope or the grade slopes down quite a bit from this new building towards the property?
Flat, and then there is an abrupt here, and then down here as well. You have a drop-off that occurs in a very short distance, maybe about like five feet.
But it's not slipping down towards the house, right, the grade there?
There's a slope over here already. This has already been filled, so there is, but the house is will remove from that slope. It's not like the toe of the, this down here is right up against the house. There's area to dissipate where the water can come down.
Jenna, so they're required to, so it's hard to see on there. There is a drain tile that collects all the runoff from the roofs and pipes it all the way around.
I was hoping, assuming that's what you were saying earlier, but I just wanted to clarify since there is a housing.
So the only offsite drainage would be grass.
Okay, thank you.
Which is exactly what exists now.
Just so I understand, because the Bull's house is zoned industrial as well, there's nothing that requires then this building to have any protection or any fencing, anything to protect the neighboring property, regardless if it's a house or just because of the zoning? Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience wish to address us on this?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Greg Franchis. I'm the developer and potential developer. Thank you for your time in the review and for the staff in their review. I just wanted to clarify one thing. Greg, you mentioned on the site plan, the distance from Mr. Bull's property line to the back of the building. My understanding is that's in excess of 25 feet.
That's correct.
So you've got 28 feet?
It shows 25 feet, Greg. The total setback required for the entire property is 12 and a half feet on each side or a sum of 25. You're actually doubling that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a misunderstanding. I promised everybody in the neighborhood that would, especially Mr. Bull, that that would be 25 feet from the property.
That's what it's shown.
Sound good. Thank you.
I have a question. I see the portable toilet placed right in somewhere in the driveway and also the concrete washout part of the handicap stall. Is that something that, how it's going to be designed?
Those are just their road control plan, so that's just while it's under construction.
While it's under construction, okay. That's what I thought, but I just want to make sure.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number 24-011, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
All right. Motion in the second. One last chance. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, on to the public hearing on the rezoning of 1017 Grant Street.
Chairman, this is a rezoning anticipated for what was a single-family dwelling. And this area along Grant Street, there's commingling of many different zoning classes. If you go from 6th all the way over to 26th Street along Grant, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. This is Lot 5, Block 17 of Riverview Edition, SJEF Homes LLC, Ark and Amber Homes are the applicants in this instance. And they are requesting that rezoning from R2 Single Family Residence District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Land use permits such a rezoning request as future land use is designated urban low intensity. That permits a rezoning to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And that would permit the, what they would want is a real estate office here, which is something would fall under the general office category. Throughout most of the area, you do see R2 adjoining this structure and then R2 to the north. But you also have C3, which is the most intense zoning use for commercial property just directly across the alley from this location. Lot size is .107 acres. There is no minimum in a C1 district for lot width or size. What you see here is the structure, and then behind it you see access, which will be anticipated to be used for parking. And then you see three zoning over in this locale. It's part of the overlay district for the master plan, downtown master plan. The downtown master plan lists as an objective small-scale redevelopment projects north of State Street, which this is also development character. That is to provide a mix of office retail and residential throughout. And the petitioner's area is right here in the West Bridge District. So it's not something that was seen out of place. This is the original plat showing the lot, which is 92 and a half feet by 50 feet. This is the plot plan drawn by the petitioner, showing what they will do in terms of putting parking in. They only need three spaces. They're providing six. And then they will also take and join the cement or paving to the city existing sidewalk. Thoroughfare area is pretty well clear. You have Grant Street to the north. You have 10th that comes down and then accesses the alley. So there's entry into the rear portion of this parcel. And then you have Interstate 74, which is approximately two blocks away from this parcel. Utilities are already in place. If there needs to be anything done, then fire and our building department will handle any of those issues as they would be interior issues. Pedestrian access is pretty much along the sidewalk. There, again, this is going to be one of those businesses that is generating vehicular traffic mainly to come to this locale and use the services. We talked about off-street parking again. This area here will be designed in such a manner that it will provide at least the required number of parking spaces plus one ADA space. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning because it meets Goal C in attracting and retaining business in an industry. And also, given the tests that we put these types of rezoning requests through, it meets all the requirements, the conditions that we would add to this particular rezoning regard the paving of the front entry of the structure to the city sidewalk, and then also providing a dry and dustless surface for any parking lot in the rear of the parcel. I would ask if there are any questions?
Okay, this is the, this is a public hearing, so this can be handled a little differently. First, is there proof of publication for case 24-014?
Yes, there is.
Yes, there is. Okay. We'll open the public hearing on this. Is there any public comment on this particular case? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm David Baker at 327 10th Street in Bettendorf. That's catty-cornered from this property. Generally, I would be in favor of this change. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide input here this evening. Thank you to Mr. Beck for the background. I was able to read some of that today. But some of the specifics, the people in the area probably didn't know what the intention of the owners, what they wanted to do. I've got a couple of questions about the particular building. If there's any plans to augment the size of the building in the future, is there anything in the proposal that indicates that?
Somebody don't see anything.
No, it's just a rezoning request, and we don't anticipate a site plan to follow this. It will be used as built. There are a couple minor improvements, some sidewalk, pedestrian walkway, and kind of cleaning up the parking in the back off the alleyway that already exists.
Okay, there you go.
All right, that answers that question. What about signage and lighting facing Grant Street or in the alley where we have still some residential property there?
They'll have to comply with all the standards of the overlay district, and then our sign code, and then all lighting will have to be downcast on the lot itself. Can that be permitted to emanate onto adjoining properties?
Okay, very good. And you've already answered my question regarding the parking in the rear. And I'm going to make a comment here as a longtime property owner for Bettendorf, 21 years at my location. That was a single well parking space when I moved in. And it was owned by an individual, and then it was sold to another owner that turned it into rental property. I believe without city staff's knowledge, it became a multi-bay parking area, and it was never paved. So we have had a number of issues of multiple vehicles parking there in the alley. And being a good neighbor, I have not called the police and 911 to alert them about this. But as we speak, there's a camper actually parked out there. So I would welcome a change like this and the area to be paved properly. And as I heard ADA, there'd be an ADA space available as well. So I just want to confirm that that is going to occur, that is recommended, the paving back there?
Yep. Yeah, our code would require a dry dustless surface, so it has to be impermeable to be paved. It could be asphalt pavers, however they accomplish that, as long as it meets our code. And then they'll are required to have one ADA space for that facility.
Excellent. One last question. Will this be tenant occupied yet, or is the property going to be solely for business use?
We, again, the ownership regime is not something we evaluate. We are told by the petitioner they intend to use it for their own business purposes, which is, I think, insurance or real estate.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. That answers my questions. Thank you.
Mark, C1 would be like, like, commercial, right? So office-type space, typically.
Okay, anyone else in the audience that wishes to address us on this issue? All right, so we're going to close the public hearing part. And now, any questions or comments from the commissioner?
I have one. You referenced, one of you referenced this. I understand this is rezoning request, and there's more steps, right? But we're not going to see a site plan? The approval for council is going to come from this?
So the rezoning is what's before you now? I don't anticipate a site plan because there's really not much going on here. The house is going to be the house, and they're going to have a sidewalk in a parking lot that already exists.
Fair enough, but, and I don't know if this is within city control, but most petitioners get a, hire an engineer and present something other than a hand-drawn plan. And I don't love the hand-drawn plan. That's just me. So as far as standards, records, way things appear, the way things get read by commissioners in public, I would appreciate in the future if we could do that, but if it's not within our control, then it's not.
Yeah, we don't have that standard. It's not something I can impose right now. So on the rezoning, but we could look at that.
What I hear you saying, Mark, is that this is a house that's already there. It's just going to be used for a different purpose. And it's going to be improved in the back from a gravel parking space to a paved parking space.
Which should be already.
And a little bit more background, so a residential house with a home occupation in it, say you want to sell your whatever cookies out of it or something, is totally legal in an R1 district. But if you're not living at the premise, it's a business that is required to be in a commercial district. And that is because there's not enough room from the petitioner's point of view to both occupy as residents and have business there. So hence the rezoning request.
Certainly, what Taylor's saying, maybe more diplomatically than me, is if the petitioner just told us they were going to live there, they could start this business tomorrow. There would be no review for the city at all under current state law. So actually, they've gone above me on, in my opinion.
Okay, I, yeah, I just had the same observation, probably a perspective as Lynn. I know we're in a different standard here, but I would have loved to have seen, hey, how many feet is it from the actual alley line to the back of the building? What's the dimension space on these parking spaces? That would give me a higher comfort level that you can essentially park six vehicles, including an ADA in there. I know that's going to be accomplished. It's pretty hard to tell from that, but if it's not required, it's not required.
Any other questions or comments? No. All right then. Do we need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number 24-014, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
All right, one last chance for comments. In fact, all those in favor of approving the rezoning of 1017 Grant Street, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign? Here he is.
Do we have to do a roll call vote on that one then?
You're correct. I flipped the page over, Roy, and that says right there, roll call.
Yeah, roll call.
Thank you. All right, Gibson?
Yes.
I'll just handle this, is that okay, Taylor? All right, since Lisa's not here. All right, Kapler?
Yes.
Calcarri?
Yes.
Hornsby?
Yes.
Satterfield's not here, I'm a yes. Winland?
Yes.
All right. With that, it carries. Now we're on to the next case. Are we switching? Taylor's going to take this one, which is also a public hearing.
Okay. The next case for you is case twenty-four dash zero zero nine. This is a request for rezoning north of Crow Creek Road. Has the, it's currently agricultural, but has the address of sixty-five hundred, just north of Pleasant View Elementary School. The applicant is Adam's side student, Businesses Pheasant Creek Estates LLC. Rezoning is for twenty, a little over twenty acres of land currently zoned A1. Their request is for R2, single-family residence district. Their proposal, the development proposal includes the single-family subdivision containing twenty-three lots for twenty-three detached homes. So we have a picture of the property right there. Current zoning and future land use. The future land use map designates this area as urban low intensity. Areas located north and around zoning track are also low intensity. There is floodplain to the northeast from a creek, and that area is parks and open space. On the right-hand side, we have the current zoning, which is A1, our agricultural urban reserve. And then our surrounding properties are zoned, single-family, R1, apart from the elementary school, which is a remnant tract in A1. The proposed zoning is R2, single-family residence. R2 is consistent with the ULI future land use designation, and development is consistent with goals outlined in the currently adopted comprehensive plan. Single-family detached houses are allowed in this district. I will note the proposed twenty-three lots are considered large for this zoning district. Lot sizes are over four, four and a half times the minimum lot size. That twenty, the different, main difference between R1 and R2 is twenty-five versus thirty-foot setbacks. And the developer is proposing that to actually allow additional trees to be preserved on the, both the west and the east side of the subdivision. A concept for the proposed zoning, frontage has, the tract has frontage on Crow Creek Road. The road would connect just west of a current retaining wall, and then switch back up slope. There's some steep topography there, but they will be working with the, as much as they can with the topography. This would be a public right-of-way, and it would end at the north property line of this rezoning tract. Future development north of this tract is owned by a separate property owner. But that would allow that development of that tract and then connect to Winfield Court, which is currently developed. I will note that Pigeon Creek Trail is not proposed to connect to the subdivision or future development. This area has already been developed. There are two vacant lots that are currently zoned R1, and they are proposed to be developed, and that will be the end of that street. The proposed development does not necessitate any additional connectivity at this time, and it's under our maximum allowed lots for a single connection to Crow Creek. And then if we're, their future development to the north, it would connect, have two connections, Winfield Court and Crow Creek, and it meets any fire code and accessibility requirements. As noted, there is floodplain just in the far east portion of the rezoning tract. This area is not proposed for development per se. They'll be contained in lots, but it's reserved for open space, and no houses will be part of that. You also note Winfield Court up here on the aerial, right there in the blue. That will be the kind of future, this is not working for me, future planned route for kind of the master plan for a future road. Rezoning requests must adequately address seven criteria as outlined in section eleven fifteen thirteen B. Those have to meet the standard for a positive staff recommendation. Staff contends the request meets this requirement. Analysis for each criteria is included in the staff report for this case. Given the evidence and reasons stated in the staff analysis of the request, staff recommends the planning zoning commission recommend approval of the proposed rezoning request from A1 to R2. I can take any questions.
Thank you. Is there proof of publication for this case?
There is.
All right, with that, we will open the public hearing for case twenty-four dash zero zero nine. Anyone in the public wish to address us?
My name is Barbara Kelly. I'm at four eight two four Pigeon Creek Trail, on the lot right at the very end, where that connection was, or is, where it won't be. I had a few questions and concerns. One was, there's not going to be a connection, right? You said between Pigeon Creek and the new, correct?
Correct, there's no connection.
Okay, is, is there a plan to make that connection in the future?
There is not.
There is not?
Correct.
So what type of barrier will be put up there?
So are, it will be similar to other, usually you see them in temporary turnarounds in subdivisions, but it's a three diamond barrier, usually just on a fence or on fence posts that would go up there. We have, the applicant is also purchasing the lot directly across the street from you, on the north side of Pigeon Creek Trail, and going to be building one single-family home on that. And we have worked out an agreement with them that'll provide a way for our city vehicles to utilize the driveway as a turnaround. So for garbage and snow that currently is having to do a multi-point turnaround here.
Having to do a multi-point, exactly. The area right now, how is runoff going to be addressed? Because right now, when there's a heavy downpour, not only do I get it in the backyard from the feeding of the rest of the houses, that lot that you had designated as not belonging to anyone will actually rise with water.
So the concept, this is just a rezoning, and we have further steps on it. When a parcel of land is proposed for development, there's the plating, that's the subdivision of that, and that's when they designate more the engineering happens.
Taylor, I think you may have to face forward you.
So this is just the rezoning concept. Upon a further public meetings, there'll be a subdivision process, preliminary plat, final plat, and the engineering will really kind of look at those type of things. Right now, they've designated an area just below, south of the road, along north of Crow Creek. It's the low spot, I believe. That's one possible area for detention. I don't believe they've, like, asked the applicant if there's, they have not done engineering to make sure that there's more detention needed, so.
Yeah, Taylor, I, I believe he's talking at the end of Pigeon Creek Trail. You're saying the runoff from that area.
You come down Pigeon Creek, and I'm right here at the very end. I'm on the right side across the street from where you're going to be building, right? To what would be to the right of me, looking at, or looking at my house would be the left, okay? That area, I always thought was part of the, belonged to Bob Walters who developed that section. Now, it sounds like that's not the case, but that area itself takes all the runoff from the, I guess, the creek or whatever. And now that's starting to build up, that with a heavy rain, torrential, water will be sitting there for at least a week.
Yeah, unfortunately, since that's off the city right-of-way, that property was sold to the person that currently owns Bob Walters' former house.
Okay.
Just so we can try to orient ourselves, but the, the property that's southeast of you owns that piece of property. So ultimately, since it's on private property, they'll have to figure out how to handle that drainage, yes. Yeah, that, and that is actually separate and distinct from this subdivision.
Interesting, okay. So they're going to be building then, starting the construction, well, they'll do the one across the street from where I am, but the rest of this will then be starting from Crow Creek.
Coming up. Yep, and, and as Taylor said, we have several more steps for the subdivision before they're getting anywhere near that. That lot across the street is a buildable lot, so they can just go apply for a standard building permit for a single home on that property.
Okay, then, just the last question I would have is, are there any, yes, ordinance or guidance that's in place that would address construction vehicles in that area? That's a dead end. In just the last couple of days, it was, the workers were very considerate, but it makes it very difficult to get in and out when you've got vehicles on both sides.
Probably nothing that's specific in code, but I think if you make a phone call to, actually probably to Mark's group, to our building department, we can have an inspector go out there and work with that. We see it a lot, especially in new, new subdivisions.
Yeah, well, like I said, they've, they've been out there a couple of days where I've had no problems, but my wife is a physician, and she's taken out, you know, during the middle of the day.
Get a little tight, I'm sure, so yeah, that's, we can absolutely help with that.
Yeah, they certainly can't be blocking your driveway. They can't be leaving debris on the road. So if there's mud, mudding debris on the road, we get after them for that. Brent's, the engineering team and the Comdev team work together on those kinds of things. So if that's happening, we want to know. And then my construction inspectors, Brent's utility inspectors are also out there. We try to stay on top of that stuff too, but you can always call us and we'll send somebody out.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Greg Gackel, eleven sixteen Kofelt Avenue, Bettendorf. It's been a while since I looked at this plat out here, back when I was on the Plan and Zone Commission. The settlement at Pigeon Creek was being developed just to the left of this and upstream. And one of the major questions that came up was why or how there would be access to the settlement at Pigeon Creek. It's, there's something like a hundred and some lots in that subdivision. And I can still recall at that meeting, Bob Walters was there, and explained to the commission that when this other area was developed, that that Pigeon Creek Road would come down and connect to Crow Creek. Made sense, you know? And that was one reason that we approved back then the settlement at Pigeon Creek with only one entrance. It's really not a good, it's really not a good way to do it with that many lots, times that many cars, with only one entrance and exit. So when this came up, I saw this in the newspaper, I was kind of shocked to see that there isn't any connection there. And Jeff Seitz, who's the developer, I think owns that end lot, plus this lot, the, all these other lots. So it would seem to be under the control of the same person. And I don't know why the city furthermore would allow this subdivision without a connection on Pigeon Creek. I mean, the city has emphasized over and over again, they don't want cul-de-sacs. It screws up garbage collection, it screws up snow removal. And to have a, a block end to that, to basically two subdivisions, seems contrary to city policy. I guess, you know, I, I guess I'd like an explanation of, of why those don't connect.
So part of what you said, Greg, is, is not correct in that the advanced homes and sites do not own all the properties. So unfortunately, with the way that Pigeon Creek Trail was extended, the lot line that we were just referencing that exists between the, Taylor, can you? Trying to think if there's a better way to show this without looking at it. Zoom in, there you go. Thank you. He's got that, so that'd be perfect. So if you actually follow the, the arc there of how that street was subbed, it does not stay all on the advanced homes property, which means the city would have to condemn property from the south property owner. And that was not something that our administration was interested at this point in time. We do have a second entrance now, it's not the most direct one, we first one to admit that. But you have the entrance at Schoolhouse Road that does connect through a series of streets over to Settlers Point. And then the condition that this will connect to Winfield Court. When the property to the north develops, it will provide a secondary access as well. So i- if they did own all the property, absolutely, we would make them dedicate the right-of-way. But they don't own it all.
Yeah, I've looked at the ownership of that land, and there's an LLC that's, that's run by Jeff Seitz that owns that land.
No, so Greg, the, the property to the south, that Jeff Campania owns, if you extend the street along the arc that it's built on, it would encroach onto his property. So we cannot, we're not going to go in and condemn that in the direction of our city administrator. And we cannot arc that street up and around to stay on that one single lot.
I'm not going to argue with it, it's, it's bad planning.
And from the research from back when this was proposed to rezone, settlement at Pigeon Creek Seventh, that this whole area was proposed to be rezoned with settlement at Pigeon Creek Seventh. And that's when, that's why this has remained A1, because there was enough uproar about the amount of homes being accessed by one way. So this was left to A1, and there was conditions placed that this area could only be developed when there's future access to Crow Creek. And then ultimately, future access to Fifty-third, which is no longer possible because Fifty-third is now since rerouted north. But it does have access to Winfield, any future development have access to Winfield Court, would connect to this street, which has access to Crow Creek, which would make it a better situation, meet our fire code, meet double access. It's really hard to fix the settlement at Pigeon Creek, which already has rezoned two lots, two parcels on that, that neighborhood. You can't take that back.
Yeah, ultimately, Greg, in terms of poor planning, I really wish that when that was subdivided in twenty, was it original?
It was two thousand, it was, yeah, twenty-four years ago.
That right-of-way should have been extended across all of Bob Walters' property, and it was not, for some reason. He was allowed to maintain that last lot and not include it in the subdivision. That's the reason we don't have the right-of-way across there. If you look back at the settlement at Pigeon Creek Seventh Edition, that little sliver that was his single-family lot, home, plus the property to the north, was allowed to be exempted out of the subdivision, never should have been.
Who allowed that?
I think we should move on, Mr. Chairman.
Commission at that point?
Any other public comment on this? Okay, hearing none, we will close the public hearing portion. Anyone on the commission with any questions?
Just one, and we've referenced connecting Winfield Court at some point. We, is that up for discussion? Is there a development plan coming? What, we, it's just a, a future connection?
It would be mandated when that property develops.
Understood, thank you.
Until that's developed, is there going to be, need to be a hammerhead or something on the end of this?
Yes, and that'll get worked out during construction plans.
Okay, thank you. Reply, good. Anne or Roy, any questions?
None for me.
Okay.
Yeah, hey, I, I do have one. I just sent Mark a text and just kind of continuing on that thought, that there is one lot that's going to develop that, that's coming off of, it looks like the Pigeon Creek property, just sent Mark that, that text. It's, it's parcel, I can't see it at the moment, but it's the last lot on the north of Pigeon Creek Trail. And that abuts in a little corner, the property that we're, we're talking about here, right?
Correct, yep.
So is there, is there not enough space on the south side of that lot to continue Crow Creek?
Right, that's the, that's the crux of the matter, is that when that subdivision was approved, the city, for whatever reasons, did not get right-of-way established, and two private lots were developed. And both those private lots would encroach on the pathway that we would need to create the road to go through. Both the lot to the south. Both the lot to the south, although it's hard to see due to, due to the, due to the map's size, it's hard to see that. But with the full width of the profile, would not fit without encroaching on both of those lots.
Okay. Yeah, as I blow it up, I can see where it gets into a pinch point there.
Remember, it's the road and the sidewalk, right?
Yeah, it's the full right-of-way line.
Full right-of-way. Yep. And it encroaches into the property owned by Campania to the south.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. I got it now. Thank you. It's all I had.
Thank you, Roy. Any other questions? Okay. With that, any motions?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve, subject to staff recommendations, the rezoning for case twenty-four dash zero-zero-nine.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right. Great. All right. Roll call, and I will just call this out. Gibson?
Yes.
Kapler?
Yes.
All right. Calcarney?
Yes.
Ormsby?
Yes.
Stoltenberg, yes. Winland?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. With that, we move on to case twenty-four dash zero-one-two.
Mr. Chairman, I'll present the next two cases, actually, twenty-four dash zero-one-two and zero-one-three. These are final plats and replats of Forest Green, third edition and fourth editions. Background, Chris McNamara, McNamara Construction. These are two final plats. There was an original plat for this whole tract of land that was approved by this body and city council back in two thousand twenty-two. The applicant is requesting to phase the construction. In order to do that, they have to split each plat into thirds. The first phase, Forest Grove Second Edition, was approved by this body and city council in July of two thousand twenty-three. These next two will finish out all proposed residential development for this area. I will note the proposed plats match the original plat concept from the rezoning and the original plat that was approved in two thousand twenty-two. This is purely from a phasing construction financial standpoint for replating. The original plats before you is forty-six single-family homes, seventy-two townhomes, located nineteen buildings, an detention outlot, an outlot B, and then a reserved outlot A, which is still zoned agricultural, but is reserved for future commercial. And that's consistent with their future land use map. Property was rezoned in two thousand twenty-two to R3 with the following condition, that the final plat, site development plan must materially match the approved concept plan. Staff contends that is true and has been for the first phase. And it's for the third edition, which is before you. This third edition plats out all the remaining single-family lots and includes one townhome lot on the upper northeast there. This match, this matches that originally proposed layout exactly. The fourth edition plats the remaining, all the remaining residential development, which are all townhome lots. They vary from three to four townhome units per building. And then that also shows outlot A, which is reserved for future commercial development. This matches the original proposed layout and concepts. Staff has reviewed some replats and contends no material changes have been made from the original concept, and they've submitted applicable code requirements. Staff recommends approval of both Forest Green Third Edition, twenty-four-twelve, and Forest Green Fourth Edition, twenty-four-thirteen. And I can take any questions.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from anyone on the commission for either one of these? Anyone in the audience have any questions, comments? Again, crickets. All right. Well, then I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number two-four dash zero-zero-nine.
Zero-one-two.
Zero-one-two. Sorry, I got off the place. Subject to staff recommendations.
All right. Second? Anyone?
Second.
Got it? Great. All right. Last chance. Any comments, discussion? No? All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. So, the Forest Green Third Edition motion carries. Now, on to the fourth edition. Anybody?
I move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I think that gets us down to commission updates.
Give me the mark.
Sorry, no commission updates.
We're really quiet.
It's on the edge of my seat. Thank you.
All right then. With that, we're adjourned.